I'd short flag and I call the meeting to order. Colleagues, I would allegiance.
And the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Manager Johnson.
Mr. Finer.
Present.
Ms. Share.
Present.
Mr. Carlson.
Present.
Ms. Thompson.
Present.
Mr. Applebaum.
Here.
Mr. Stumpf.
President, please zoom.
And Ms. Segal-Morris.
Present.
With five members present and one remotely, we have a quorum of council. Well, we will move on to community announcements. Does any member up here at the table have an announcement about an upcoming event in or around Yardley?
Apparently, Michelle does.
Sorry. Yes, Friends of Lake Efton is having a All Things Yardley gift shop, a pop-up gift shop on December the 13th, the week after the parade, from 12 to 5:00 at Friends Meeting House on North Main Street. Come on over and check us out. They have parking there, so that's a plus.
Excellent.
Are you done, Michelle?
Yes.
In that same vein of the holidays, I've been attending YBA meetings and they've been diligently planning the ye olde Christmas holiday parade, and that is Saturday, December 6th, and extends into a Christmas holiday event afterwards with Santa Claus. And it's expanded this year with vendors that'll be selling different kinds of gift items and the tree lighting, of course. So I just want to make sure that you make plans for December 6th, beginning at 3:00 for the parade, and then soon following the parade, there'll be the Christmas event at the pavilion area within Buttonwood Park.
Excellent, thank you. Any other community announcements from the table? Any community announcements from the public about upcoming events?
Hi, Julie Pessini, Yardley Borough. On behalf of the EAC, I would just like to let everybody know in the community that on Saturday, November 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Lower Makefield and Yardley Borough will be having their e-waste recycling event, and this will take place at the Lower Makefield Township pool next to the library. We'll be taking everything from microwaves to cell phones, anything appliance-wise that you're looking to get rid of, we'll be collecting it and they will be recycling it in a responsible manner. So that's Saturday, November 8th. In addition to that, Yardley EAC and the Shade Tree Commission are partnering to plant 17 trees throughout the borough next week. So it would be November 14th and 15th, we are planting trees. So the 14th is a Friday, the 15th is a Saturday. We're looking for volunteers for that event, so if anybody is interested in volunteering with us and the Shade Tree Commission, you can email the Yardley EAC at YardleyEAC@gmail.com. We don't have times or meeting locations yet for volunteers, but we do know that those are the two days. I think the 14th is going to be in the afternoon, and then the 15th would be in the morning. So yes, we will be planting trees on private properties as well as public spaces.
Would you mind just elaborating on the places, if you can?
So the public spaces are in the borough on public property. So we're looking to put two trees in Buttonwood Park, we're putting three trees over at the Dolington and North Main Street intersection, so the patch of space that is near the sign with the duck. And then in addition to that, there are trees that are going to go in, sorry, Trailhead, at the Trailhead, yeah, sorry, I blinked out there for a minute, at the Trailhead as well. We're planting all native hardwoods, so American elm trees, American lindens. We're going to put cucumber magnolia over on the Dolington and North Main Street patch of land as well. And again, that's in partnership with the Shade Tree Commission. Huge thanks to Derek for pulling all of this off. He's been communicating with us frequently and he's been very informative, so I thank him as well. And then obviously, anything going on private spaces was determined by the homeowner, and they're working with Derek then on that.
Madam President?
Yes.
I failed to mention, at the sake of embarrassing Ms. Pessini, that she was selected or appointed as the chairperson of the Environmental Advisory Commission. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
I could've done worse.
That's okay, I'm fine. No worries. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of public can approach council, they can state their name and whether or not they are a Yardley Borough resident, and we ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes per item. Any public comment this evening? Sir?
Come forth, please, just so we can hear you on the recording, too. Three minutes, okay. I heard there's going to be some kind of a bird tower put in the Yardley field, and not many people know about this, and I feel it should be more public knowledge as this is going on. I'll just say, I like the field being barren. It's beautiful, as is, and I'm not too sure who I need to talk to about creating more awareness about this before this thing all of a sudden pops up. And then, you know, Julie came to my house, we talked on my front porch, and that was the only reason I'm aware of this. And I think I saw some other things on Facebook, but there's not enough public knowledge for the residents of Bell Avenue about this.
Thank you. Yes, we're sending out a communication from the borough tomorrow about it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, yes, Mr. Levine.
Brad Levine, 202 Yardley Commons. I'm not sure if this is the right section to bring this up, but I live in Yardley Commons, and I'm part of a committee that's expressed interest in developing safer walkways across Bain Street. I remember about a year ago, we had talked maybe about using part of a Vision Zero plan. I'm not exactly sure what's entailed in that, but I don't know if that would be a part of what we need to implement, or maybe if we just put up signs like we had at one point. I remember we had like some pedestrian crossing signs, and it seemed like they were only up there for like six months or a year or something like that, but we're hoping to get something to kind of improve things a little bit. We do have a fair number of pedestrians crossing about, and with the expansion up on North Main, it seems fitting that we, you know, have some of these improvements also on South Main.
Well, we are actively working on that. Would you like to give an update, Mr. Finer?
Sure, you're preaching to the choir here. We did apply for a pretty extensive crosswalk grant to put, and we figured, we discovered that we could put a crosswalk in right by where Yardley Commons is.
Okay.
I'm glad there's a committee there that is involved in that, because that crosswalk would have a landing. Without the graphic, it's hard for me to describe exactly where it is, but we're allowed to put crosswalks in where you have T intersections.
Okay.
Because there's a street where the train station is.
Right.
That basically counts as a street, and next to that, we could put a crosswalk in.
Okay.
And with a landing on Yardley Commons, ideally Yardley Commons would then take that landing and do some sort of a path to get into the complex.
Right.
Right now, it just kind of ends where the mulch is.
Right, yeah.
Now, there's a funding issue, because those crosswalks are expensive, and if we get the grant, we'd still have to come up with quite a bit of additional funding. We should probably end up seeking another grant, the design part of that.
Okay.
But that was one of the most desired items on that list for that grant, and I think because we are concerned about that same issue of people needing to get into town from Yardley Commons. You can't go on the side you're on, and you have to jaywalk to get across. There's no easy way, and, you know, it's asking for trouble, you know, because there's just, there's no safe way to do it. So, you know, that is, and that crosswalk, do we have beacons on that one?
I believe that one does have beacons.
So the grant we applied for, where you would push a button, it's solar-powered flashers, and because the traffic is coming into the borough there, they're really going kind of 35 and adjusting to 25?
Yeah, and a lot of people more.
Yeah, so it's a more challenging crossing, and it's an advantage to having a crossing with beacons to kind of calm the traffic as they're, and sort of send a visual indication, okay, you're in town now.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, that's what's happening on this end.
Do you know how far from the, from like the road entrance, or from the, how far from the side these have to be? Because I can, visually, I can think of, I can think of a few places, but visually, I can think maybe about like 20 feet from the road entrance would probably be like an ideal place, because there's no like flower bed or anything like that. And there's like actually kind of, I think there's a path through the trees, too.
You mean where the crosswalk has to be?
Yeah.
Let me defer to the engineer on that.
We did, I think when we had your pictures up, though, we did pick out that path through the trees, though. It's not like an official path.
Yeah.
I kind of remember, we're like, oh, there's already something there.
Mm-hmm.
But go ahead, Mr. Pollie.
I believe it was, you know, where we were envisioning is very close proximity of the driveway, the entrance into Yardley, into the Commons.
Okay.
It was closer to that mulch area, and it's really also aligning it, you know, crossing the street and where the best location with that would be. If, as I was looking at the schedule for review by, for the Yardley grant that we were pursuing, is November, the selection committee should be reaching out, you know, coordinating efforts, and then in December, the notifications for award or denial will be issued by email.
Okay.
But we were looking at that location for a crosswalk.
Okay. I'm just thinking in terms of inside Yardley Commons, there's a sidewalk along, it basically does parallel the main drive in there, but it's kind of a little bit, it's probably like a good 20, 30 feet from the drive. It's out a little bit, because, well, maybe it's not that much, but I'm just thinking it would kind of like, as I envision in my head, and without measurements, it probably doesn't mean that much, but it would almost provide a straight shot into that. You just cross over the parking lot and walk down the path.
Yeah, you know, if this grant is, you know, awarded and we, you know, get into the design, obviously, we would be doing like a workshop.
Yes.
Discussion, you know, with the Commons as well, so it's placed appropriately, people understand where the flashing beacon has to be located, you know, and go through those steps as well. So it's just not, you know, with, you know, we would be looking for input, you know, and coordination efforts for that.
And then you also have like, our biggest constraint is always PennDOT, because they have a lot of rules and it's a state road.
Right.
So where the crosswalk can be, like, if you get too far from the corner, then you have like a, what they call a mid-block crossing, and it's really hard to get those. You have to get like surveys and all sorts of like studies and, really, really tough. So we have to keep it close enough to the corner that it counts as that kind of crossing that's essentially part of that, of the particular street.
The road intersection, yeah.
But within, within that, yeah, I mean, I'd absolutely think that, should we get this grant, and then we figure out how to fund it?
Okay.
We would absolutely engage Yardley Commons, because that's the whole point of it. It's really for that complex, not a lot of other people walking around there.
I mean, is there anything we can do? Should we get in touch with anybody and say, you know, we would really like this, because, you know, it's a safety issue?
I would recommend stay in touch with the borough managers who can relay messages to Public Works, which myself and Ori and Jared are on it currently.
In terms of letters of support, Patrick, would that be helpful?
I, you know, if there are letters, we could, we would be happy to forward those over to PennDOT, and we could, you know, or, you know, the grant coordinator and let them be aware, you know, providing, you know, community support letter.
I mean, how many residents are there in Yardley Commons?
242 units, and on average, there's two people in a unit, so you figure 480, 500, something like that.
So if you were to put a letter together and explain that, you know, nearly 500 people, which is about almost 20% of the population of the borough, lives there and cannot safely get a few blocks down north into town, and this side, this crossing would make that difference and increase safety at that level, I mean, I think that's a great idea, and I think that public support is always a big thing, you know, and help, might help them recognize. I think it's great, if you want to put it together, and will you guys forward it to add to their application?
Okay.
And that would be great for, if we have to do a secondary grant, then we would already have that, and you could kind of redo that and support.
If you don't mind, I'll give it to you, and like, if you want to critique it.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
Are you the point of contact, Brad, for the committee?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we can also, I'll start an email thread.
Okay.
And so that we can just keep, keep you updated.
All right, cool.
On this project.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Any other public comment this evening? Hearing none, we will move on to consideration of the consent agenda dated November 5th, 2025. It includes approval of minutes dated October 21st, 2025, event permit for the Christmas parade and tree lighting that we just heard about on 12/6, 2025, Main Street and Buttonwood, banner permit for the Christmas parade from 11/23 to 12/7 on Main Street, and Resolution Number 2510, amending the police pension plan, waiving employee contributions. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve as submitted?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Share, seconded by Councilperson Finer. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. You have before you the finance report dated November 5th, 2025. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. Police chief's report, please. Chief Golden.
Thank you, Madam President. For the month of October, the Yardley Borough Police Department had answered 755 calls for service. Of that 755 calls for service, 345 are proactive police texts done by the officers of the department. We issued one parking ticket, we conducted 96 traffic stops for the month. Of that 96 traffic stops, we issued 55 citations. We investigated six accidents, and two arrests were conducted. And that concludes my report.
Chief Golden, sorry, I hope you don't mind, but you sent these stats to us before the meeting, and you had a comparison from last year to this year, and we have had a few out-touch points from residents recently regarding speeding on Main Street and on River Road, and some conceptions that, you know, maybe there's less enforcement, but the statistics clearly show that enforcement has been maintained, even though we have less staff on hand right now. So can you just share some of those comparison numbers from last?
Yes, so from October of 2025, and October 2024, there was 111 stops in 2024, a little down from this year's month of October with 96, not too and far in between, and 68 citations were written in 2024 of October and 55 of this month. So the traffic, you know, and if you plan it out, if you look at it, the whole schematic of it, not everyone we stop gets issued a citation. I think, as any agency, if we were to always do that, I think we'd have some gripes and complaints coming our way as well. So we try to be fair and also our enforcement.
Absolutely, thank you.
Well, I was just going to add, anecdotally, this is totally anecdotally, but I just have noticed Yardley PD, like, all over town, more visible, maybe it's just more in my mind because of all the talk of police lately, but I always appreciate it. I see them doing active patrol, you know, they're just, they're very visible, is what I'm saying. And I agree with you, it doesn't mean that, you know, we have to throw the book at everybody, but it's, it's really just the idea that there's, there's presence here. This isn't a place to go and experiment with what happens if they go 100 miles per hour down Main Street.
Correct.
You're likely to get caught, and I think the visual deterrent is a huge first step.
Yes.
And so just, there's just that visible presence makes a big difference.
And if you were.
I appreciate seeing that.
If you were to compare our statistics with, say, a larger agency like Falls Township or Middletown Township, if you look at the numbers, the ratio of what we're doing on traffic per capita, we're probably right neck and neck, and again, that's usually with a lot less officers on duty conducting the traffic stops than what we have, so.
It's because you know where the hotspots are also, and I think that helps.
Yes.
You know.
Yes, and that's why we focus a lot on, the one complaint, I believe, was a resident on North Main Street, and we do hit that area pretty hard due to the off-ramp of 295 and 95 coming down. People tend not to realize there's a drop if they're not familiar with the area or just not paying attention. So we do understand, you know, with the residents' complaints up that way, that it is an issue, so.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Managers' report, please.
The public inspection of the budget begins on November 10th to November 21st. That has been advertised, and we're ready for the amount of people that'll be coming in to inspect the budget. I did, we have sent out the final invoices for the fourth quarter of trash for 2025. We're preparing for 2026, and as a reminder, we are going to be doing, because of the high cost of the billing annually, so we're going to send out one bill in January, we're going to ask people to pay within the first quarter. Still no applications for bed and breakfasts. We added a section to the website for the Police Planning Committee, and we will be putting documents up there, whatever council decides they want to put on there. Public Works completed the painting on South Main Street in front of 24 South Main. The owner and the business owner that were here at council are very happy with it. Brown Street. Brown Street had a pretty considerable sinkhole. They excavated about four feet down, filled it with stone, no leaks or anything were found, so it's really a mystery on what happened there, but we'll keep an eye on it. Um, I'm working on the reappointments to boards and commissions. We will be putting out a alert soon that there is some openings on some of our boards and commissions, one being on the historical board. Um, please share on your pages, if you have them, the, um, fall leaf schedule, which is November eighth, November twenty-second, and December sixth. Um, we did have one zoning hearing board meeting in October. The, uh, resident did receive their requested variances. We have nothing scheduled for November as of yet, and that is my report.
Thank you, Manager Johnson. Engineers report, please.
Uh, thank you. We've issued our engineers' report to council. Uh, are there any questions?
Are you going to be addressing, um, I don't know if you want a question on the engineers' report or just separately, but. It's not listed here. Are you going to be addressing the current schedule of the North Main Street sidewalk?
Yeah, I could talk about North Main Street, uh, phase three right now, as we've, uh, been discussing. Pico is currently relocating, uh, their gas service. Uh, we did have a, uh, Manager Johnson and myself had a pre-construction meeting with our contractor in PennDOT on October twenty-third. Uh, we're waiting for PennDOT, for Pico to be completed, um, and then our, our work will be moving forward. Uh, discussing with the contractor today, he's, he's going through his schedule. Again, as I get an updated schedule, I'll be sharing that with Manager Johnson. Uh, there is going to be, um, we're working through some test pits for some possible locations where there are utilities that we are crossing. Uh, one would be at the location of, intersection of Irving in North Main, as well as there are a couple locations further north, uh, to take a look at where the residential, uh, water service connections are as well. Um, so we're coordinating with the contractor on that, as well as discussing with Pico. Uh, once we get the, uh, these utility coordinations, um, test pits out of the way, and Pico's out of the way, we could move forward on that. So I'll get that schedule updated accordingly as well.
Is Pico still scheduled to finish by the ninth?
There's been discussions with our contractor, they were delayed maybe a week. Uh, I'm gonna be reaching out to Pico tomorrow on that issue, um, but what we did do, we did receive the cold weather, uh, paving approval from PennDOT as well.
Good, okay.
So that's in our hand, um, and, and PennDOT's very, uh, cooperative, you know, on everything as well. Um, so I'll, I'll keep Manager Johnson updated, and so we could, you know, advise the residents as we're moving forward.
If you could keep us, Public Works looped in too, that would be helpful, and also, um, if you were to guess right now, based on all of what you said, when would the date be that the contractor would break ground?
Uh, well, there.
It's gonna be the tenth, right, so?
Well, I mean, the tenth right now, but with Pico with that weak delay, potentially, it could be a week later.
Okay. Just good to have some date in mind, understanding that it might change.
And they're, and they're looking at starting really, you know, from phase, the end of phase two, and working their way north. That's how, that's how we talked about it, uh, during our meeting. Uh, they are, uh, as phase two, they did look at, um, needing some areas for some lay-down area, so it looks like they are gonna be, um, lay, you know, aiming towards utilizing Fitzgerald Field again, uh, this year, uh, because it's either that location or, or the Annex location, so, you know, talking with, with the contractor, they'll probably be coordinating with Fitzgerald Field as well.
And then repairing any?
And then they'll have to repair it, as we did last, for phase two.
And also, the final thing, it's just that, that resident on North Main Street that had the disturbance with the metal plate, do you know if that was addressed? That's probably more of Manager Johnson.
We haven't had any more complaints.
Okay.
I think they've, um, sealed it a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's tough with them, cause they're always gonna move.
Yeah.
As then you get it all set up and a truck goes by and it changes, but hopefully it'll be done in a week, so.
I mean, the steel plates are gonna be limited as well as, as during this project, since we're getting into the cold weather, you know, um, you know, PennDOT, you know, our contractor's gonna be working on closing up at night and, uh, and moving forward, but, but I, I did see that complaint as well.
Okay, and with, sorry, one more thing, with the cold weather permit, um, does that mean that we are able to work so long as the weather cooperates, or is there still an end date later on?
So long as the temperatures cooperate for the paving requirements, correct.
Which means above.
Thirty, for, for base course, it's thirty-five degrees and rising, and for the final wearing course, it's forty degrees and above.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilperson Stump, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, I was just gonna comment on the topic of the steel plate, so, cause I kind of took the lead on that over the past week, so, um, there was somebody that came out and connected with the homeowners. I drove by it myself, and one of the things I noticed is that the plate makes most of the noise when you go over at a high rate of speed, so I actually connected with Chief Golden, and that night, he had the police sitting there at the, uh, the intersection there of Irving, just to kind of do speed enforcement to, to, to help mitigate it as much as we could, and then I actually saw, uh, both the homeowners at the firehouse yesterday when they were, um, coming to vote, and they, uh, they both were very appreciative of everything that we did and responding to their concerns, and, um, at the end of the day, they're, they said, well, we're really happy that we're getting a sidewalk, so if we have to live through this for another week, it'll, it'll be all right. So thanks to everybody who, uh, who helped us on this, much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, anything else, any other questions for Mr. Foley on the report part? Okay, we can move on to the, um, consideration to authorize RVE to assist with applying for the twenty twenty-five LSA for Borough Hall. Whose item is this?
Yeah, so, um, we, we provided a, a proposal that's included in the borough, in the council's packet. Um, as, as we previously discussed, the LSA grant is, again, a zero-match grant. Um, you know, award values range from twenty-five thousand, uh, up to a million dollars, and we, we looked at the, um, the remaining budget, uh, for, for grant services, and from my, from my review, we had around twenty-seven thou, twenty-seven hundred dollars, uh, remaining. And so, you know, coordinating with Manager Johnson, uh, some of the elements really to, to help out would be the engineer's estimate and the location plan, so we've pared down our scope, uh, to assist with those two elements, um, you know, as putting together a, a grant application, uh, for the renovation, for maintenance items for Borough Hall, is what we're looking for. Uh, so if, if there are, you know, what we're proposing for twenty-six hundred dollars, uh, not to exceed value.
Thank you. Any questions on the proposal?
I have questions, but are we, we, this is for, uh, going up for, gonna be a motion, right?
Sure, we can make a motion now, sure. Um, is there a motion to authorize?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Siegel-Moore, seconded by Councilperson Share. Discussion?
Okay, so first, I'm all in favor of having Borough Hall get up to speed, so that's not on the table. But I have some questions about this, um, cause it's very convenient to have twenty-seven hundred dollars left and then find a twenty-six hundred dollar grant application to do something which I'm all for grants, you know, a hundred percent, but in this particular item, I mean, I'm guessing at your rates, it's about sixteen hours of work or so, I mean, do we need a location plan? I mean, can't we just get estimates for, you know, the things we want to do, put them in a package and write a narrative in-house, send it out, and take that twenty-six hundred dollars, I'm happy to say, okay, we didn't spend it, let's divert that and just do some, paint a few windows, you know, I have a guy who could do like five hundred a window or whatever, you know, and just the mortar, just start to fix things instead of spend that money on a, on a grant. We should still apply for it, but can't we just write that narrative in-house with estimates that we got? And also, I mentioned this before, I'm very much against replacing these historic windows. I think that needs to go before HARB. I think that if you ask a, a, someone who likes to do extra work if they should replace the windows, oh, yeah, sure, you should replace windows. This is a historic building. These windows were built to a standard that you cannot get windows at this standard anymore. And, yeah, maybe they need some restoration work, it's totally doable, a lot of people with historic houses have the original windows, so I don't like the idea that we're just throwing in new windows in a grant, not because of the, necessarily, the cost, but because it's a historic building, we should respect it, and we should definitely get HARB input on that. Um, so that's the two items. Again, I think we should do it, but I don't think we should pay the engineer to do it if we could do it in-house, and we should use that money to start doing some of the work.
Thank you, Mr. Finer. Any other questions or comments on this?
Um, I guess I have a question, if I may. How would you suggest, I, I don't know who I'm addressing here, but, uh, as the liaison for HARB, how would you suggest we get them involved? Since they haven't, you have, no one's come to them and said, we have a request, I just want to kind of get a sense of what the, uh, process might be for that.
Who, you're asking me?
I'm, I'm, that's why I said I opened it up.
Oh, okay.
I didn't want to answer.
I mean, wouldn't you just, at the next meeting?
Just have a discussion?
Bring it up as an agenda item, or?
And, and I'm not sure, Paula, if that's something you would like to, and I'm, I'm not trying to give you extra, I just don't know how to approach it.
I mean, we shouldn't find out what is the reason that, that you feel they need to be replaced, as opposed to just painted and, and fixed, and then, you know, go for, and give them some information on what the issues are, and let them give you expert opinions and come back to council, so we can decide if this is, you know, what the best course of action is.
Can we take money that's earmarked for grants and just use it for something else? Isn't it from part of the grant fund? Are we allowed to take money out of the grant fund and use it for?
It's our general fund, isn't it?
I don't know, I'm just asking, I thought we had a specific fund for grants.
Yeah, I mean, as we're doing tonight, we have to vote to expend money for something, so we would have to vote to expend it for something else. So the piece of this that has been most difficult for just one item has been quotes, um, for the roof, and then I know this isn't the roof, but we might, for this, have fifteen different things where we would want to try to come up with a bu, a construction budget. And I just don't have clarity into why that's been difficult. Um, that's a very valuable aspect of that to me. Is it twenty-six hundred dollars valuable? No, but, um, getting three quotes each for fifteen items, if that's what we come up with for our, our maintenance list, um, is valuable to me. Um, but, yeah, I don't know in terms of competitiveness, I have read a lot of LSA grants, they typically are, um, drafted by an outside firm, but I don't know in terms of a maintenance grant, which of these items make it more or less competitive. Do we know that, Mr. Foley?
No, I'm, as, as we were looking at it, you know, these, some of the options of, of, uh, assisting with some of the, um, let's say, moisture issues, uh, you know, we would look at that for, for including, as well as the basement drainage and the roof leaders, um, as parking lot, but from, from a competitive, this is a, you know, it's not a roadway project, it's not a sidewalk project, um, it, it's more of a maintenance of a borough, so the LSA grant does encompass a lot of different types of, of opportunities there, if you, you know, from the past awards, so we thought it would be a good fit, uh, you know, to pursue, you know, this zero-match grant.
And it's not just windows and doors that we're looking at. We can look at anything on the building, we can look at the fire escape. Do anybody know how old the fire escape is? It's the side of the building here, the building needs to be repointed, we have issues with water getting into the basement, the basement has pretty much a nice pool at the bottom whenever we get a little bit of rain, so then that mold and moisture goes throughout the building as well. So it's not just windows and doors, it's maintenance of the entire building that we're looking at, including painting.
So we're looking at more of, like, I think, maintenance is less attractive as a word than renovation, like, for a grant like this? A Borough Hall renovation seems like something that they, do you think the LSA would be more apt to support a renovation as opposed to just maintenance? Cause maintenance seems like, well, why aren't we just maintaining our building, whereas renovation is, we're improving. Um, like, when you talk about, like, water, diverting water to not accumulate and damage the building, that's kind of more like future proactive as opposed to just painting and, you know?
Yeah, I mean, a renovation, you know, you know, expansion, you know, makes sense as well of, of the, a need for more space, I mean, there's, you know, always an opportunity to add a second floor and, and an elevator as well, you know, and, and go from there, but it's really, um, you know, I think the, the one thing we were looking at was just trying to address some of the maintenance items, and that's why I called it, you know, maintenance as opposed to renovations.
It sounds like a home inspection, though, this is what you get when, when you're buying a home, and they come and they walk and they take pictures of everything, and then you get like, uh, they don't call it a location plan, but it feels like that, it's like a book where everything is, and it's mapped out on your floor plan, what needs to be addressed. But, yeah, to Ori's point, like, is, is a, a maintenance grant gonna be competitive? I don't know, I don't know the answer to any of these.
And I would want to see, like, looking at this list, right, and there's stuff here that, and I understand how it works, I mean, stuff here looks like it's sort of like padded to, to create sort of an overall sense of something.
That's what's excluded, that list.
Oh, that's right, that's right, sorry, so going up to the, right, okay. But, so, it says repair elements include window replacement, door replacement, restoration of offices, facade repair, sidewalk replacement, drainage improvements is the part you're talking about that's causing, um, and it seems like we're applying for a grant, but we don't know exactly what we need to do.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe that's because of time.
You know, as the LSA grants here available, you know, this is what we proposed, we could always take a step back and do more of a facilities assessment review, and, you know, and, and, and from there is, is to talk about, you know, potential cost for replacing those as well, but we, you know, Manager Johnson has, has been able to get quotes for some of the things that she's, you know, looked at as well, so we were just, you know, just piggybacking on that, but if we wanted to.
I think the, the helpful paragraphs about describing what, what is the service being rendered by Remington Vernig engineers is not necessarily the, for examples at the top, but the, we will provide limited, limited services to support coordination with the grant, the borough manager, and review the existing quotes, obtain, um, the building repair, we'll discuss additional items to include within the scope, so, you know, making that maintenance list, for lack of a better word, um, we will prepare a location plan. So those are the two deliverables.
Correct.
So I look at that, and I think, well, if we got, what if we got like a general contractor or three of them that are, understand historic structures, and got an estimate for what's going on, what would you do, what would this cost, and we got, you know, that would actually not cost us anything, and then we would have one that we, that seems like a, you know, the best one of those three, and put together narrative and send away for the grant, and take twenty-six hundred dollars and just do those, like, when I see mortar missing on the side of the building and, and the, you know, the paint missing, I just think we should do that, like, just do it. Could we, I'm, I'm just offering an alternate path, we can still apply for the grant in-house. What do we get by RVE packaging? Does that?
I just, I think the question is just, Mr. Foley, is this, uh, grant scope you have, you do for other clients? Is this something that other clients have asked you?
We, we do prepare grants just for estimates, there's other townships that have their own grant writers, and they look for us to, to prepare, you know, the, the estimates for projects, and we.
But I mean, specifically for maintenance, like, if a building.
For maintenance, we do facilities reviews as well, so, you know, our, and, and we do renovations for various housing complexes too, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? I know it's a little, we're off, but not really. I see the LSA grant submitted for the police department roof replacement on eleven-twenty-six twenty-six, and I thought we talked about.
That was twenty twenty-four, yes.
Cause I'm like, I can't be.
No, that, that is incorrect there, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick, I may have missed, I'm sorry. May I ask Patrick a question?
Sure, of course.
Patrick, I have a question because I may have missed it, but what was the amount for the LSA grant that you were seeking? Not the cost, but the amount that we're seeking.
The amount for the grant awards range from $25,000 up to a million dollars. So a million dollar max.
And I know that we've discussed this here before, but I suppose for just, just to jar my memory a little bit, the success rate of these LSA grants are reasonably good? Is the, in other words, is the $2,600 investment a good, I know I'm asking a person who's doing the work, but, and you might be inclined to say, well, of course, but just, you know, a good investment. Do you think that the success of getting this LSA grant is reasonable?
I mean, the success rate, you know, I can't, you know, the, we're not going to be successful if you don't submit it. But as well as it's a zero match grant, so when you're spending the $2,600 or whatever for that grant amount with the zero match, you're getting, you know, you know, an abundance amount of, you know, unmatched dollars as well towards your grant.
Right.
I mean, towards your project.
A large bang for your buck.
If it's, if it's successful. But is there a way to leverage this information down the road? Because I understand where Mr. Finer is going with this. It's like, well, what if we don't get, then it's $2,600 that we've used up. And I just want to, in my mind, if you, clarify for me, just.
Don't all of our grants kind of fall into that category?
Right. It's, yeah.
We apply, we don't know.
Right, right, no, I get that.
But if we don't take that risk, we're never going to get the money and it's a zero match.
Just for abundance of clarity too, like, this was drafted with the idea that we are drafting it ourselves, like, right? The grant is being drafted in-house by the borough and RV is providing supplemental documentation. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, that this would be still with the $2,600 in in-house written grant.
So what, that's really, the $2,600 question is, what are we getting from RVE adding a little piece to this that we can't just get by getting a general contractor in here and getting a comprehensive estimate for all these things so that they're not like three windows and one door and one painting and one mortar and we'll just have it kind of encompass the contractor we might use? Because I think if it's so many little projects, that's where a general contractor starts to make sense because they have better access to people and more experience and have more understanding of the integration between the parts.
I don't think you get the documentation from a general contractor typically unless you do like a home inspection. And I'm trying to remember, has any, how much we pay for our home inspection? I'll look it up now. It was, it was, it was over a thousand, but I don't know if it was over 2,000 home inspection.
Wait, this is a commercial building, so.
Right. I think, I think, the price does not seem crazy to me, is what I'm saying, for, to get the site plan and then the list of maintenance items. Could we save?
Do you need that?
I, I am assuming that supporting documentation for a highly competitive grant for a, for a, in my opinion, a non-savory application is helpful.
Can we get, what about the roof? Don't we have some of those items from the roof? We applied for a roof for this same building, so we didn't have a site plan for that.
We have, we had, if you recall, for the roof, we bid out the roof in 2018. The project, the bid amounts went over, were over the budget. We rejected the bids. And so, you know, when, when this grant opportunity came around last year, you know, we, we pretty much went through and updated our engineer's estimate and submitted for the LSA grant for the roof.
What I'm saying is, was there a site plan in that?
It's more or less a roof, roof plan for that project.
Well, how is that, what I'm asking is, are there parts that we can just use? Like whatever we did there, this is the same thing, except instead of the roof, it's the windows and the doors.
I remember it was like a drawing of a roof, though, wasn't it?
Yeah. Their roof plans, they're not elevation plans or building plans.
So you, do you feel like our chances are substantially stronger of winning this grant if you provide those parts versus us just providing the work that needs to be done and doing?
You know, I think it's.
Get something for that? That's what I'm asking because I'm looking at that as money that we could use on the building immediately.
Yeah.
It's not because I don't want to do it.
I mean, the chances either way, I think it's, it's the, you know, it could, us not doing it, you, you know, versus the borough doing it is, you know, it's just us providing an avenue to get something done as well. So I think that the chances of either submitting would be the same.
Other questions on this?
I just think it's a little bit like apples and oranges, Ori. I don't see $2,600 as a major investment, to be honest with you. And you know, I don't usually disagree on some of these things that we've talked about with grants. And we've been very fortunate to get support on grants as well. And I think this is maybe, and for, when you look at general contractors also, do you really, what do you think you're really going to get for $2,600, to be honest with me? I don't think you're going to get a lot. And so I would have to say that I'm supportive of spending the $2,600 personally.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm not saying get a general contractor for $2,600. I'm saying get a general contractor who is experienced with this kind of work to give estimates on the various parts, to give a full estimate.
But I think we can do that in, you know, at the same time.
Is that?
You know, we could do both.
We, we should do it, but I'm saying we could get, I'm trying to figure out if we could spend $2,600 on doing some repairs right now.
Yeah, yeah.
It sounds like, you know, this is the way that people feel we want to go. And I'm, I'm okay with that. It's, it's just, I just want to be smart with, with the money. The only thing I would say is that, is that I would insist that we don't move forward with any changes to windows or doors or any of the historic structure of this building without putting that through Harb. That is not something for us to do without their input.
Yeah, you have to.
Okay? So if we are all good with that, then, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think the piece here that's always tricky is if we're applying for a grant that is an unusual topic, it's really hard to determine chances of success with or without an attachment. Because if you look at the examples available out there of successful grants, they just, they don't match up. So that's the data that I think we need to start retaining. What are we including in each of our grants? And are we getting feedback after we're successful? Did you read that? Was that helpful or were we going to win it anyway? Like, we, in the instances where after we've been rejected or awarded, we've had a conversation with the grant coordinator, that is hugely valuable. What, what are they telling us about our application? And I just don't, I don't know enough here to say like, no, we don't need to do that.
That post-mortem should be part of every grant application. And then we should have this, the pieces, the parts that we do, sometimes, the other part that goes along with what you're saying is that sometimes we've seen this with the sidewalks, but with a lot of grants, you have to go through it two or three times.
Yep.
To get approved. So we really need to make sure, or we have different grants that can use the same parts and then we pay all over again to do the whole thing again.
Yep.
And that doesn't make sense. I think we could be much more economical and maybe even apply for more grants if we have those pieces available to us and reuse them.
I think that's all logical. I just wanted to find out what the timeline was for this grant.
The end of November.
Okay, so we're basically within, less than a month.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to act on this quickly or I.
Okay. I will, are there any comments from the public on this item? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries six, zero. All right, so do you have anything else, Mr. Foley?
That concludes my report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Solicitor's report, please.
No report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's report.
Yes, thank you. So real quick, first of all, I'd like to congratulate all the winners of the elections yesterday, the council people and the mayor-elect. Congratulations. And with that, I would like to extend an invitation to all of the winners to join me at certain block times on the next Yardley Borough on-air radio show. I think it'd be a great interview. It will be non-political. It will be the easiest softball questions you've ever had, trust me. The date is Tuesday, November 18th, between 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. So if you are a winner of the election, I will be emailing you. I'd love to block out, depending how many people jump in, I think there's five winners, right? So if we did 10 or 15, 10 minutes each person, that'd be, if everybody applies, but if only one person says they want to do it, I'll give that person the whole hour. So I'll send an email out to everybody, but I'd love to have everybody on the radio show that day at their own individual time to introduce them to the community and have a great conversation. So congratulations and hopefully that's a great welcome to the community.
Wonderful, thank you.
I will say, I've been on one of your shows and it is very enjoyable.
And fair, right?
Fair and, and had a lot of fun.
I'm not looking to make any waves.
Yeah.
All righty. Council member reports. Councilperson Siegel Morris.
No report other than to also issue congratulations to yourself, Ori, Martha, Jason, and Paul on winning your elections.
Thank you.
It's a long road. Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilperson Finer.
Well, on that note, I would just say I'm proud of our community for not succumbing to fear and hate and, and seeing past that because there was a lot of mudslinging going on that didn't need to happen. And I'm, I'm just proud that we live in, we don't have that luxury in the whole country. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Councilperson Applebaum.
It's unprepared, but it just kind of flew out of my mind. I would just say this, I've been extremely proud, well, first of all, yes, before, you know, I did want to congratulate everyone as well. Quite an exciting election cycle. And Martha and Jason, since you're here, you know, good job. As far as what I wanted to say, there's a lot of moving parts with me right now as far as, except for my hip. That's the only part that's not moving. But what Julie Passini mentioned about working with another committee or a commission is so very important. And I just, as we move in, you know, finish this term and move into the next term, I surely would love to, you know, focus more on that and, and better, when I say better, I don't mean as a complaint, but just to improve communication between all these committees and the Borough Manager's Office, not the Borough Manager specifically, but just, you know, the office in general. I think there's, what we've learned over the last year is that we can get a lot more done with that kind of communication and cooperation. So I'll just stop at that, but, and just, you know, very proud that we've accomplished so much. So for those that are leaving, even though I know Don's not here, you know, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Did you say?
Yes, I forgot something. Thank you. I didn't want, yeah. So I did have, a few months ago, I had been at the, this is my liaison to Planning Commission, and I had been at the Planning Commission meeting and Judy's Garden came up. And what they had actually done is they went, for those who don't know, there's a statue we have that was purchased for us by the, the, the person who donated the property to us, Tim Rutterow and his late wife. And the statue, they looked at where the statue would be and kind of re-e eyeballed the site with their eyes. They spent the time on it. And this is actually a good example of the benefit of having commissions, that council doesn't get necessarily the chance to get that deep into the weeds. And they got deep into the weeds and they realized that, they kind of modified where the statue sits on there. And they put the thought into it. They, they came up with a revised site plan. It's not massively revised. It's a little bit revised and it looks great to me. And I think it's really smart, what they did and, you know, I think it's positive. So the question really I have is, I never heard back any dates from the sewer.
Sewer.
And so we are kind of stuck in, there's money to be raised, there's, you know, there's, we need to get that statue there, although it's okay where it is for now. It's, it's our statue and it should come back to Yardley and be in that property. We want to make sure that we are acting in good faith and don't just kind of forget about Judy's Garden because it was given to us to do something with it. And now we have the Planning Commission that has done a revision of how to use the space or like a tweaking of it. So, you know, let's do it. What's the deal with the sewer authority? Because I do believe that we don't have to necessarily wait for them for all of it, although if it's right around the corner, it makes sense. But the easement area that the sewer has and the temporary easement area, there's a lot of work that can be done outside of those areas. So we need to kind of make a decision, are we going to get a date and then get things going for, after that date? Or are we going to start to at least move the statue there and do some of this work in advance? But without knowing the date, it's kind of hard to make any decisions. So has, does anyone know of any dates?
We haven't been going out to bid yet.
Right.
So, I think the big concern with Judy's Garden, and I think we expressed this before and Don said as well, is the big trucks and stuff and the work that has to be done in that area. And I know you don't think it's going to cause any disruption or be in the way, but it's just the what if? What if something happens? So I think it's just best to wait a little bit until that gets rolling. If you want to do other stuff around there, fine, but I think moving, I talked to the people that are housing the statue and the creator and it's happy to stay right where it's at, where it's safe because it is 800 pounds and we're not going to want to move that around multiple times. So he, they said it's, it's fine to stay there for as long as we need it to be there because then they have to create something else to put there anyway. So they said it's happy there.
Yeah, well, I should point out that that new location for the statue of being is actually further away from where the, those trucks would be. And, you know, when we worked on the Yardley Borough Trailhead, we had to deal with not having that easement for PICO and we worked around it. We couldn't get one inch into that PICO property. So when I hear, well, these big trucks, they have an easement. We have it written down. We have a temporary and a permanent easement. There's absolutely no way that they can go on our property. The same standard applies when it's PICO's property and when it's the borough's property. If they don't have an easement for that space, their trucks cannot go on our property. They don't have the permission to do that and they're legally, they have to stay within their easement. So I don't get, well, just in case, they're responsible if they destroy our statue by violating their easement. That's their responsibility. So, and I'm only saying that not because I don't want to, because I want to get complicated, but I'd like to know a date. Is it like a month? Is it six months? Is it a year? Is it three years? I don't think it's right to just kind of have a flying timeline and then we can't do anything until something happens at an unknown time. To me, that's like why people don't trust government because it just kind of sits there and everyone's pointing their finger, oh, we just have to wait for that. And then everyone's off the hook until that thing comes back. And I, I think, you know, I think we need to push on that a little bit.
Well, they've been working on this project for years and the pushback was some of our residents and easements. Some of those easements have been taking forever and there's actually one that actually went to court as well. So it's not like they're just sitting with their hands, sitting on their hands, not doing anything. It's, it's a huge project. It's a millions, millions and millions of dollar project that they're doing. So I just, I.
I understand it, but.
My rush.
Well, give me a date or I'm doing the work. That's how, if I, if it's my house.
As soon as the authority can give us a date, I will give you a date, but.
Yeah, but if they don't give us a date by a certain date, we have to set a due date. We don't get a date by a certain date.
But we would have to vote on that.
No, I understand that. You're right. But my perspect, I'm sharing my opinion here.
Okay.
I don't like the idea of just kind of sitting around waiting for a massive project with no information.
But sometimes if you want to make sure that it's going to work, I mean, God forbid that, you know, there's a misunderstanding and they have to go over into our easement just a little bit to do it right, then we kind of mess things up.
I've been on the other side of it, though.
Well, do we think we can get a ballpark, like to Ori's point? Well, do we think we can get a ballpark, like to Ori's point?
I can ask Christine in the morning. Yeah, they were hoping to go out to bid in the summertime, but because of the easements and pushback from a resident, they had to.
This summer that we already passed.
Yep.
Correct? That's what I remember. So, but installing a statue is also a weather dependent activity because we need a large footer. So I think if we can plan and say, hey, this coming summer will be the time that we can pour, that's just good information, then we have until July to raise the money. So, yeah, let's try to get a ballpark and go from there.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, councilperson Share.
I would also like to congratulate everybody. Everybody that's won. I have enjoyed being on council for the past two years and I look forward to all of the changes and the next chapter that we open up.
Thank you.
No other report.
Thank you. Councilperson Stumpf.
Yeah, so I'll echo what everyone else has said. Congratulations to the, to the winners. I have enjoyed the past two years of serving on Yardley Borough Council and even though I opted not to run again this time around, I look forward to still being involved in things around the Borough and we still have a couple of months left and I already started speaking a little bit with some of the councilmember Alex about how we can tee them up for success to continue the, the great work that we've begun here in Yardley Borough. That's the rest of my, that's all of my report.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we have a few discussion items this evening. The first is just to accept a resignation from our Police Planning Committee. I will read it. It's from Peter Wareman Jenko. We had already announced this, but it did not, I did not receive it in time to go into the agenda packet for our last meeting. Council President Thompson, I hope this message finds you well. Please accept this letter as my formal resignation from the Yardley Borough Police Planning Committee effective immediately. This was not an easy decision, but after some reflection, I've decided to step back in order to focus on a new professional venture that will require much of my time and attention. Serving on the committee has been an honor and I truly appreciate the opportunity to contribute, learn and be part of a group dedicated to the safety and wellbeing of our community. I want to thank you personally for your support and for allowing me the chance to participate in this important work. I remain grateful for the experience and wish you and the entire council continued success in all of your efforts on behalf of Yardley Borough. Warm regards, Peter. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Share, seconded by councilperson Finer. Any discussion?
What about, where do we go from here?
Next item.
Yeah.
On your agenda. Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing, any discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, the next item. Thank you for the transition there, Mr. Finer, is this discussion?
It was obvious, but yes.
On the makeup of the Police Planning Commission. So in my mind, there can be other options as well. Feel free to bring them up. In my mind, there are two options that make good sense to me. The first would be, we, we proceed, given that we still have a good critical mass of three members of the public that are unaffiliated with council on the committee, plus a member of the police, of the police on the committee. So four outside of elected officials and staff, so that we don't have to kind of reorient a new member at this point. Or the other option that I think makes good sense would be to go back to our, our list of applicants and kind of maybe make selections of like our top two and then go back and ask them if they're still interested.
I favor the latter because I think that the way that it's been split up into little groups, it's good to have an extra person and it doesn't really hurt to go back and have maybe community outreach, just reach out to those people and see if they're still interested. You know, it doesn't seem like there's any downside to that unless somebody can, unless somebody has what I'm not thinking of.
No, I think that the one person on the committee who hasn't previously been on council in their life, it required significant time to get him up to speed. He's done an excellent job spending hours with Paul, hours with Don, hours with members of the committee. I've spoken to him a few times. So it's just, I don't want someone to feel they're behind or feel like they cannot serve in the way that they want to because everyone else is ahead of them. So that's my only hesitation. I'm also fine with trying to fill it with somebody who already applied though. I don't want to start all over with new applicants though.
I, I think we can continue as is. I mean, maybe if somebody else drops out then, you know, we'd want to replace them, but the group is up and running and everybody's up to speed. So I would just leave it as is.
Any other thoughts? I, would anyone like to make a motion for one thing or the other?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue with the committee as is with one less.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Share, seconded by councilperson Siegel Morris. Further discussion?
Can I, can we hear from Jared? Are you, since you're the Chair of Community Outreach and you kind of spearheaded the process of the applicants? Do you have any, any input on this?
Um, I, I think I would say, you know, we had a lot of people that were interested in serving on this committee. You know, as far as we know, this is an, this is an ongoing committee. Like, it's not like we've set an, an end date on this. You know, there's been, I think, what, two public meetings so far? I think also we have the precedent of when we had a resignation before, we backfilled that position. So I think it would be, you know, I mean, as long as we vote on it, I think we're in the clear, but I think we would be breaking precedent a little bit if we said, well, we're not going to backfill this one, but if we have another one, then we'll backfill I, I think, and then it's like you're trying to get two and bring two people up to speed. I mean, you know, if we fill, let's say we fill this one now and let's just say there was a resignation from the committee six months from now, but we felt like we only had a month worth of work left to do, then yeah, at that point, maybe just leave it as it is. But I think this early in the process and with the level of interest that we had, I mean, Caroline and Ori, you guys being on the committee, can you, do you think that somebody could just kind of pick up with where the committee's at? Or do you think it would be hours and hours to bring someone up to speed?
I mean, I, I think that because it's split off into sections now and we have very specific tasks to do, it's not as wide scoped. So it helps to have another person there doing, you know, you could just focus on what that part is and depends on who it is, they may be able to contribute. Worst case scenario, like there's, that's what I'm saying, there's like, there's no downside to just filling the position. There was plenty of interest. So what do we lose by filling it? It's just like what we do until the committee is no longer in existence.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, sorry, the delay makes it tricky. I, I think also too, you know, that's what we would do with any of our other committees.
Yeah.
Within the borough. I mean, I, I think when committees sit vacant, it's because we can't find somebody to do it. And I think in this instance, I mean, gosh, and all the time I've been around Yardley, I think this is the first time, I mean, in, in my recent memory at least, and going back seven years, that we have had this much interest for one committee. And so I think it would be a disservice to our residents who want to volunteer and want to be involved in, you know, have a, have a role in shaping the future of the borough. I, I think, to, to me, I feel like we almost owe it to our residents to, to give them that opportunity.
I definitely, if we go that route, would need to go back and review my notes before, so we'd have to wait until the next meeting to decide.
Sure, sure.
Who we're going back to.
This was a short-term committee. Like, I thought their ideal was it wasn't supposed to go.
I mean, so we, we like made a pact in our first meeting to move as quickly as we could on the unsavory options so that the police department can have peace and that that can be off of the table. And so that piece is, is designed to be more of a sprint. We had thrown out the end of the year and that wasn't feasible just given the quality of the data we're trying to collect, but that piece, so I would suggest maybe this new person wouldn't be on that, that committee, subcommittee. But we removed the end date though for the committee, so it, it could feasibly, you know, go, go well into next year.
Yeah, and even to that note, I mean, council president Thompson with, you know, Mayor Harding is a member of the committee now, you're a member of the committee as council president, but, you know, come January 1st, we'll be making another shift. In theory, I would think you would take the mayor's spot and still be serving on the committee, but that then potentially leaves another opening. So I think, I, I guess what I'm trying to illustrate is we, we have a precedent of the committee shifting and evolving and.
Yeah.
The reality is we really don't know how long it's going to be to get all of the information that we need. And so, yeah, I say we, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
That piece is clearer to me. I think it was, I, I designed to be, it goes with the roles on council, not necessarily with, so we, the roles on council and elected officials are mayor, chair of public safety, president and vice president are on the committee. So whoever those people are on January 5th.
So that, so that we wouldn't have to fill another spot then, is what you're saying?
Right.
It would be whoever is in those, okay.
But I think your, your point about, you know, like it just seems to be, we should, the whole idea was to make this consistent and fair and public facing and why not replace people? It may happen again, you know, and it just, especially if it goes on longer than it was expected to. And so if that's our policy, if we have a committee, this, unless we at some point decide, okay, that those unsavory options have been eliminated, let's say, okay? Now we can say, well, do we need to have as many people studying the rest of it? Or do we want to pare that down? But that hasn't happened yet. So until, like a shift happens in the committee, it seems like we should just keep it going, you know, to the best of our ability, as long as there's interest.
Yeah, I think both, both scenarios make good sense, like I said. So any other comments on this? So in terms of timeline, if we wanted to replace them, we're talking about, you know, voting on our top, you know, our first choice, second choice at our next meeting and then just getting them, you know? So they would not be then attending a meeting until the third week in December, the new person.
We don't even know if those persons are, are still interested.
Correct. Yeah. So that's why we would need to have like a ranked order and community outreach would go out to them. I just prefer doing, rather than going out and asking people and giving them false hope, like let's come up with our rank of who we, who we would want and then go out to them and ask. So, okay. So we have a motion on the table. Any other discussion from the public, from council?
And our motion is to not do it.
Correct.
Okay.
It's to leave, leave this vacancy. All right, all those in favor of leaving this vacancy open, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay. Wait.
Wait, 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 wait. I misunderstood.
I think that we need to clarify the motion.
So if you say nay, you would like to fill the vacancy?
Yes, so nay.
I think, I think that was for two. Was it for two? Okay. Motion carries. All right, discussion on possible, and possible vote on sharing draft documentation with watermark. So this came up at our last meeting. It's a, it's a direction that I think we'd like to go in, but we are, this is my proposal to pace ourselves with the technology that we have available and the unknowns regarding disclosures. I will say that I was asked by our solicitor to say that this does not change how we would handle right to know in any way. Am I saying that right, or?
Yeah, that's correct. Obviously, you know, if a resident submitted a right to know request, we'd still be required to provide at pursuits the disclosure rules and the exemptions. So this is really just making this publicly available without the need for that request.
So you had provided to you an example of two documents that are already on our website. And the documents were projected during our Police Planning Committee meeting last two weeks ago. And so they have a draft watermark behind every page and then each page also in the top and bottom says draft, not reviewed or approved by council, data unverified and for discussion purposes only. And so the proposal before you, as we endeavor to release more information, hopefully reduce right to know requests, but increase transparency, is just, let's start with items that are already projected during a meeting and this would include our council meetings and our planning committee meetings, any, any meetings where folks are projecting things up here because folks could cobble together the documents with screenshots if they wanted to, but we're just making it easier for them to engage with those documents, review those documents and be part of the conversation with us. So again, this is only for projector to display during council meetings to start and then, you know, I've called this phase one. If this goes well, we'll see what we want to include next. Apply, all publicly shared draft materials will include a solicitor approved watermark. Distribution will occur after the meeting and it will be posted on the website. Staff and committee chairs are responsible for submitting properly watermarked versions to the Borough Manager prior to posting. I can provide a how-to manual. It's very easy if you have Adobe or any PDF software to add watermarks. And then we'll consider future categories as we go from here. So I would, we want to discuss it first. Does this feel like something we want to do?
I think it's a great idea.
I want to thank you for being responsive. One of the things I had enjoyed about working with you is that you're, you know, this came up just recently and, you know, we have a first step. So I think it's great as a starting point. I have some questions. I mean, I think, I would like to see, you know, there's a, there's a large area between stuff that's been put on the projector and stuff that's like, really shouldn't be distributed, that's like, really would be harmful if it went out. So we'll have to dig into that and that's why I like that you said phase one, because, like I think of even just North Main Street sidewalk is a great example. There may be documents that we're not projecting everything, but we just want to put them up so residents and the community can see what's going on or updated timelines and those things, maps, you know?
Yeah, oh, yes.
As a starting litmus test, it's good. Maybe, I think it would be nice to get clarity from the solicitor on, if you are part of a committee on council and you have documents, you want to share them with the public and they haven't been displayed, is there, part of this is process, which I understand and appreciate. What is the legality around that?
So traditionally, when you're looking at the disclosure of public documents, you're dealing with the right to know law. Internal pre-decisional deliberations, that's an exception to the right to know law, so you'd be able to hold on to those documents. Once they're distributed to the public or exhibited at a public meeting, they would be subject to distribution under the right to know law. Generally, if you're talking about your own personal notes that have not been exhibited at a public meeting, those would remain not subject to disclosure. But really the question it comes down to, have they been publicly deliberated before a quorum? At that point, they are subject to distribution if somebody asked for them.
I'm asking actually a different side of the question, which is, if I wanted to put, like if I had notes and I wanted to put them out, I'm just going to use myself as an example, but any of us, okay? We had something we wanted to put out. Is there any legal precedent that stops us from doing that?
It would depend on the subject matter and the document.
Okay, so like an updated timeline for North Main Street. So let's say I have that in my notes, but there isn't one. So I just put it somewhere, like, you know, we have a shared folder and I stick it in there and under Public Works.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think to be safe at that point, dealing with it, you would want to vote by council that that should be subject to public distribution, if it is a borough record.
You'd want.
What Ori said about, he would have notes about, let's say, the sidewalk. I thought, in my mind, the information that would go out would be anything that we agreed upon and booted on, because he could have ideas about what he wanted and that can come across to the public that we've all decided on that.
So I feel like though, if we're talking about like posting on social media 10 bullet points of where we are with the project, that's something we all, many of us do. We like to keep people apprised or we go to the press and we give them an update on things. And those are two disclosures that council is not voting on. They're more informal.
Yeah, that, that I don't have an issue with. That's not a.
That's not a borough record. That's really your own personal note, something that you've created that you wanna distribute. The issue that, what I would have is if it is an internal borough document, uh, that you've had access to as a part of the committee, that should not be released without a vote from borough council.
So that, to me, would be if the project plan was not your bullet points, but an RVE work-for-hire that the borough paid for on RVE letterhead, putting that out, that should be something that likely should be discussed here in this manner.
Right, that's the distinction I'm trying to draw.
Probably most everything that comes in the agenda packet.
Yeah.
And I think that an easy, an easy Phase Two would be project management files, where they have the, the site plan and the, the timeline, but obviously, the issue with that is our timelines are often not accurate for a lot of reasons, because things get pushed, and then we just have to make sure we're very attentive to that record on the website and updating it. It's just, it becomes an administrative nightmare in some ways, if we have four of them up there at once or something.
It could also be a living document, where you, your own timeline is the same one you're updating for the public, 'cause it's like, and the council, it's just all the same, you know, living document. But the reason I ask is just 'cause I'm trying to understand for the future how we do this and, and create a process for release of information without having to vote on each thing, but, you know, like, this is a great idea. You have a litmus test. If it's been projected, it's deemed public, 'cause essentially, it's already been in the public, so we're just making it easier for them.
Right, it's disclosed as a part of the meeting, and you've deliberated on it.
Beyond that, we'll need to think of ways, because it's gonna be, be very tedious to vote on every change to a document, for example. And as Caroline's saying, that if it's a project plan of a project that, or whatever, supporting maps and photos and that kind of thing, uh, you know, there's some way we can define that so that we don't have to go through and vote each time, 'cause we've already voted for the concept.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think you have to categorize everything.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the way to do it is to have sort of broad, broad categories of documents, that where you run into issues, you know, even with, like, your packet, for example, you know, Pat's report, Paula's report, oftentimes, it might have conversations that they've had with me, where they're updating you and spoke to the solicitor about X, Y, and Z, and now there's legal advice that's in there that you're, you know, breaking the attorney-client privilege, which is borough council's privilege to break as a group, uh, by just publicly disclosing that. So that's why you get a little bit into what's the subject matter of the document. You know, as a part of the Police Transition Committee, I assume that there's a lot of internal records that ha, might have privileged information, and if it's not subject to disclosure, you know, medical records, social security numbers, driver's license numbers, um, addresses, minors' information. Um, so it's just something you have to be careful about distributing without really taking a look at what's in it.
But, so based on this, the, the way to do it is just to have it be displayed. In other words, if I wanted to really, for Phase One, if I wanted to release a document, I could ask for it to be displayed during council meeting, and therefore, it would get automatically, uh, approved for-
Yeah, and I, I mean, look-
Appropriate to the spy, I mean-
Yeah, exactly. Like, I'm talking about a timeline, I'm not talking about sensitive documents. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think we should be, we have this wonderful screen, we have, I mean, I don't know if folks check out how many people view our, um, sessions. I mean, many times, we're close to 1,000 views within two days, it's between the two platforms. Um, a lot of people watch our meetings. I don't know if that's the same person watching it six times or not. Um, so this, this should be something we've, you know, again, we've paid good, good money for it, that we should be utilizing more to share information with the public, but it's not necessarily, um, friendly to somebody who really wants to dig into the information more, so that's why this is, um, you know, I think, a good first stop, as I said, so. Any other questions? Okay, any, oh, yeah, sorry, thank you. You're my par- parliamentarian tonight, I keep forgetting that. Um, do I hear a motion to approve this, uh, sharing of documentations with watermark plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Applebaum, seconded by Councilperson Finer. Um, does the public have any comments, or anyone who hasn't commented yet from council? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries six-zero. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion was made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned at 8:58. Thank you.